Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. If you would please stand and join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands. In this.
I'd like to start off tonight with a moment of silence for the following individuals. Evelyn Ashley, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Stephen LeBlanc, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Robert Alt, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Elizabeth Gleis, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Joey Oliver, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Robert Partlow, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. First up tonight, we have a proclamation. So I'm going to read this and we can present some certificates. Throughout our school buildings, school and eda pep counselors have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The school and eda pep counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school and eda pep counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Marizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February 7th, 2025 as School and Eda Pep Counselor Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion to accept that proclamation? Mr. Crabtree, second from Paul. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous, and thank you to all of our counselors and advocates. Do we have anyone here this evening? Okay, we've got a special presentation this evening, all about our North Stars Esports. So I'd like to welcome you guys up and show us what you guys are doing. Doesn't matter which one, just turn it.
I'll use this one. That makes them come up here when they need to talk. Hi, so my name is Catherine Leo. I teach biology at CNS High School, and I've been an esports coach for a couple, couple of seasons now. Behind me, we have a whole bunch of people that have all come to join us. And I'll get to introductions in a second. Do I, do I get to control it? Is that a thing I get? Excellent, okay. So here are our coaches for the team. So you got me on the left there. Mike Bryson is here. He's my partner up at the high school. And then Kevin and Aaron are at the junior high. We're all teachers by day, and then coaches come the afternoon. So it's pretty fun. I like it. Underneath, we have our team captains listed. So there's four of us at the junior high, or at the high school. We've got four teams. Each team has a captain, and then the same at the junior high. Team captains were kind of a new thing last semester, last season, and it's working out really nicely. It gives the kids a little bit more leadership, a little bit more responsibility when it comes to practices and organization, and who's going to play, and what the strategy is, and all those sorts of things. So that's pretty cool. The program started a couple of years ago in fall of 2022, only at the high school. So we actually had a few junior high kids take the shuttle bus up to the high school so they could play with us. Zach is one of them. I'm out, he'll be speaking to you in a few minutes. And then, so we had our two seasons at the high school, fall '22 and spring '23. And then in fall '23, we were able to expand into the junior high and have teams down there as well. That was just a matter of equipment. In order to play esports, you kind of need video game consoles to do it. So we had to get more of them so we could have more teams. Our goal is to foster teamwork, sportsmanship, and critical thinking skills through competitive gaming. It's all the same stuff you get with traditional athletics. It's just in a little bit of a different venue, in a way. And it's that opportunity for kids who otherwise wouldn't be on those kinds of teams to get that experience with those sorts of teams. So we value all the same ideals: teamwork, innovation, dedication, creativity, critical thinking. You name it, it's part of the sport, because that's what it is. It's a sport. So our picture's up here. The one on the left is a couple of our high school kids practicing Mario Kart for our upcoming season. The picture on the right is our team last fall. I want to say that was last fall. Yes, after we won the first title that we got. So that was a very exciting day, very exciting moment. And that wasn't even in-person at Elite, so that was all our own internal excitement. It was a very nice day, it was very fun. We have approximately thirty active students, give or take. I can't speak for the junior high, but I know every time I show up, there's a new kid there, and more just keep showing up. So do you guys get that at the junior high? There you go. See, more and more people just start showing up. We range from grades eight to twelve, and usually, once a kid has joined the program, they stick around. Very rarely have we had them kind of come and go. I know a few that have left for other reasons, but most of the ones we have have been doing it since the beginning and intend to keep doing it. I know a couple of our alumni are at RIT and playing esports over there. So this is a thing that they're able to carry with them, which is pretty cool. These are pictures from our most recent success. This was the fall playoffs at the Elite Gaming Arena downtown, which is, if you've never been there, it's pretty cool. It's in the atrium building in Clinton Square. You should go check it out. But on the left are our high school teams with the titles for Smash Brothers and Mario Kart. On the right are the, I want to say, I know one is the Smash team. I don't know what the bottom picture is. Okay, there you go. So that was really fun. We're playing again this season. Playoffs will be in April. We will probably be there. And we'd love you all to join us and come watch it and see how things go, because it's super fun and very exciting. So I kind of mentioned this before. We play currently three games. So we started off with Mario Kart and Super Smash Brothers, because that was the easiest barrier to entry. All you need is a couple Nintendo Switches and a TV, and you can play them. And then that's where we want our titles. That's where the kids want to play. That's, you know, what everybody kind of knows and loves to do. We did get a couple of computers for last season. So we have three gaming computers at each building now, which allows us to play Rocket League. Rocket League's not really the game anymore. A lot of districts, a lot of schools are playing Overwatch, Fortnite, and Marvel Rivals, which require more equipment and more computers, which we'll get to in a little bit. But that's what we currently do, and we have a lot of interest, and we have a lot of kids that really want to play. So the more that we are able to get, and the more space we're able to have, the more we're able to play, and the more kids will be able to involve, which is pretty cool. All right, I'm going to make kids come talk now. Go first. All right, Zach. Off, tell them what you do and do.
I'm Zach Street, and I play both Mario Kart and Smash Bros. and Rocket League. And I am just so grateful that esports got to where it is, because I struggled with trying to find like a sport to play, because I have asthma and all that. And then I found it in ninth grade when they first started it, and I was like, this is perfect for me. And then it all was just great from there. And it just improved everything about, like, school life and everything about that. And it, like, impro, ah, can't speak. It improves your problem solving and your critical thinking skills by, um... Because when in the middle of like a high stakes game, those are what is being used mainly. And then communication and teamwork are crucial to Mario Kart, because games come down to teamwork and communication. And then it increases your focus and concentration, because you win with focus and your concentration. And I really hope that esports gets bigger, and I hope that we expand to more and more things.
Two more, boys.
Oh, I am Matthew. I am one of the captains for the high schools' Mario Kart teams. I, I think I've been here the longest. I've been here since day. So I can speak on the growth I've had over this past two and a half years. When I joined CNS Esports, I was a very quiet kid, didn't really talk, very reserved, and I had literally no friends. Obviously, some things have changed. I mean, I'm up here talking pretty confidently to all audience. And I mean, I'm talking as a team captain. Mario Kart, being a team sport, requires a lot of communication. You need to constantly be telling your teammates everything from basic information, like your placement in the race, to coordinating offensive plays against your opponent. I was pretty much forced to get really good at quick, effective communication. And beyond talking during games, I also started talking more outside of them. I've become friends with my fellow players, and not only that, but this has helped me make friends outside of esports, like in BOSEs. Hopefully, you know, you're noticing, a lot of these benefits are pretty mu, are all shared between traditional physical sports and esports. All of those fun, mental, important things are shared. However, there is one important difference I'd like to highlight, which is the kinds of people who might join esports. There are many people who would never want to play a physical sport, or can't due to disabilities, or like Zach with his asthma, as he said. But they would immediately jump at the chance to play in esports. Of course, it gives these kinds of benefits to people like me, when I started going to the high school, who would never otherwise have been able to have these kinds of opportunities.
Uh, hi, uh, I'm Nathan, and I'm one of... There it is, find it. Hi, I'm Nathan. I'm one of the captains for the junior high Mario Kart team. I tried playing Smash during the fall season, and that didn't really go great, fortunately. Uh, one thing with esports is, um, like, actually with the fall 2023 season, when it first came into, um, the junior high school. I tried soccer, failed to make the freshman team, and then I also failed to make the modified team. So when that hap, when esports came around, um, that really, again, kind of made it more accessible, because there's no cuts at all. And then I was able, uh, to go from no experience for Mario Kart at all to just like that. It was able to even win the, um, school championship we had last year. Definitely builds a lot of different skills, including that, like, quick teamwork that a couple of others have talked about previously. Like during the playoff games, a lot of times too, we had to, um, figure out what we had to do quickly. And it's, um, more so kind, and wow, I might have lost a word. I cannot speak English. The playoff game is definitely a different challenge, because it was in-person, and, uh... Other thing is, is that I was thinking about one days, uh, because they are going to be right next to us. You have to make sure to be able to communicate, but make sure it can't really be known exactly what you're going to do, because that kind of gives it away. So that was, uh, one thing I'd be kind of figured out as a team. Being with the, the team that I've had since year one, uh, is pretty great, which, friendships like that, and, uh...
All right. Um, so you heard it right from them. A lot of benefits to this program, both academically and socially. I know at playoffs in the fall, a lot of our kids were excited to get to meet a few of the rock stars that they had encountered on our online games. And then we've had, we've made connections. The kids are friends on their switches now. They're playing games at home. They're making these new friends in other districts. There's a lot of expansion, I guess, in their social circles when it comes to things like this. So lots of really cool things. And so to sit and to watch it happen and to see it grow over a couple of years makes me really, really proud of these kids, and I'm very excited to continue working with them. And speaking of continuing, um, we've kind of hit a ceiling in the ability for our program to expand. So we have the, the connections, and we have the interest. What we need is money, honestly, but I mean, I feel like everybody needs money for everything these days. But the other big thing we need is space. I know at the junior high, they currently use one of the computer labs in the technology wing, which is great. It's a full classroom. It has a lot of space for them. They can accommodate a lot of students within that space. In the high school, we're in this teeny-tiny little room off the library, and we don't have room for expansion. So I'm working with this, with district administration and with building administration to get a larger space at the high school. There's one I have in mind, we're working on it. But the other thing is, other schools are playing larger games. They're playing games with, that require more equipment. Like if we want to play Overwatch or Marvel Rivals up against Syracuse City, Central Square, West Jenny, Liverpool, JD, FM, I could keep talking, we need the equipment to do that. And I know that we're a district that likes to see what other people are doing before we do things while they're doing them. So we need to catch up. The other thing is, thanks to, uh, Jason's allowing me to go to the Nice Gate Conference. I met people at OCC and SU who run esports programs. So OCC has a huge program, that's their logo up there with the lasers. SU has a full, like, bachelor's degree in varying realms of esports. So they have their competitive program, and they have their academic program. And Dr. Joey Gresiak is the director, and he is actively recruiting players from the surrounding districts. So SU, OCC, Herkimer, RIT, they will send recruiters to Elite's events, to playoffs, to scout the kids, and recruit them, which is huge. Like, you don't really hear about that in something like esports. That sounds like a football thing, right? So to know that our kids have the potential to get scholarships and academic benefits from going to SU to be on their, you know, Overwatch team would be so cool to send the kids up there to do that. And they're ready. They're ready to do partnerships, they're ready to do classes. There's a super esports marketing class that he really wants us to teach. There is mentorship programs. They want to bring us up to do tours. They want to do tutoring, they want to do coaching, they want to do all these different things. So got a lot of fingers in a lot of pots and a lot of things in the works here. But hopefully, within the next couple of years, you will see us kind of expand. And the next thing you know, I'll be here with the SU people bragging about the things that we're doing with SU. So, uh, that's all I really have. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. Please come watch us play in April at Elite. It's really fun and exciting, and they'll all agree with me back there. But that's all I got, so thanks.
Can we ask a question? Sure, okay.
I'll take a question.
Well, you said we can come spectate at the Elite event. It makes more sense, probably the... Who are you playing? All those schools you rattled off?
Yeah, we, well, we play ourselves. So junior high and the high school will play each other occasionally, because we are separate teams within the same league, which means the two high school teams will sometimes play each other as well, because we're all independent teams within the various leagues. But within like the Mario Kart circuit, we've played, uh, I know Syracuse City, Christian Brothers Academy. That's on the list, Central Square. Um, I don't think West Jenny's come over fully yet, but they're starting to. There's, there are two competing leagues right now, and we're kind of so early in the program that everybody's fighting to the top, and then give it a couple of years, and someone will rise to the top and be like, this is what everybody does, so...
So about, about how many roughly, unless you leave? Here at CN, at North Syracuse?
Between the two buildings, somewhere between thirty and forty, probably. It helps that, like Nate mentioned, we don't do cuts. We don't have, like, tryouts. We, like, anybody who shows up that wants to play is welcome to play. So they don't all get to play in the match, but we're not going to turn kids away for practice.
So I, I am going to have to ask you to repeat something you said quickly, because it went in and out, and it was like, I was like, whoa. There's a bachelor's degree and...
Yes. There are academic programs in the esports world at Syracuse University, yes.
And there's, they're recruiting, and there's scholarships.
Yes. It is different than playing the games. You, you don't get a bachelor's degree in playing Fortnite, right?
Okay, I feel a little better. But that'd be cool.
The degrees are in the areas, the academic areas that surround the world of esports. So there is the playing the game aspect, but there's also the marketing and the advertisement and the online branding and the running of your own business, and all of those pieces that go into it. And that's what the academics is about. So, and Joey, Dr. Joey even said that a lot of the kids that are in the academic program aren't the kids on the team, like, some of them are. But the kids, it's, I mean, it's the same as the basketball and football and lacrosse players. You don't go to major in basketball. You go to major in business, and you play basketball. So, kind of the same concept.
I, I do, I do have another quick question based off that now, so... Sorry. Sorry, I didn't know you were done, but it's, it's in the same vein.
I just wondered, this is the same Mario that came from over forty years ago in Donkey Kong?
Yes.
That's, that's what I remember from, okay. Do they know that?
I don't know, do you know that? Probably.
That's where Mario and his brother...
A lot of them are smarter than I am, so...
They're dodging barrels from a...
Yeah, Jumpman.
Marco wasn't born yet. The, so you were just saying that there is, that there are scholarships, of course, that are for the different majors. Are there also scholarships that are for kids that are competing?
Yes.
That are going to, you know, major in economics or whatever it may be? Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, if the kids get recruited specifically to play Overwatch, there are...
Right, that's what I thought you were saying too. I just wanted, so it's kind of, okay, very cool, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to jump in before Mr. Crabtree. All right, this is, I guess, a bragging moment for me, okay? This is awesome. I mean, I played actual, you know, conventional sports, many of them. But I also was, was part of the comic book club in school at Cicero and Gillette. So that's before there were games. So we actually would draw comics, it was, and make new comics up and all that stuff. When I first got into technology to get my, my bachelor's, we used to get together and, okay, I'm going to age myself, Doom. The original Doom, but they had modules that you could write your own code, and we used to just set up. And it's amazing how far it's come, because what it was, we used to have to do, the internet was so slow. We'd all chip in, we'd build a huge computer, we'd put it in the middle of a table, and we'd all, we'd all network into that computer, and that's how we would play our different modules against each other and stuff. So computers have come a long, long way, believe me, along with the internet. So you guys are, but I just think this is awesome. It gives kids an outlet that wouldn't always have an outlet, gives the kids a chance to do something after school, wouldn't always have a chance to do something after school. And like you said, it teaches more than just how to play a game. It's teaching a lot of responsibility. You got to show up, you got to support your other teammates, you got to communicate. So there's a lot to it, and there's a lot to it afterwards, right? Like you said, in college. It's amazing how quickly universities and colleges came up with teams. Next thing you know, they are, they're offering scholarships. You can go in, like you said, you can go in, you can go in for accounting, but play and get a scholarship.
This is not a new thing. Yeah. I mean, this, I, I got into this when I was in college, twelve years ago. I played collegiate esports with League of Legends of all games.
Right.
Which I'm not proud of, but, um, this is, it seems new, but it's not.
No, I mean, it's, it's new because it's really in the, in the forefront now, but it's been slowly building for years. But comic books are still around. All right, thanks.
Just a couple of comments. Number one...
Just a couple of comments. Um, number one is. Michael's the tech person. He's the tech. I don't know if it's a podcast, but your students were on it after they won in the, um. In the studio at the competition and they did a wonderful job. I just, you know, how I got into that, I don't know. I once I turned on and it. And they said, we're interviewing CNS students that just won the state championship, da, 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 da. And one of our kids is not here because he's over playing one of the. Other competition. They did such an outstanding, I was so proud to be, uh, from North Syracuse for what they said and, and talked about all the things that you had. But I want to thank you because you have been an inspiration. Um, you've come to many of our board, uh, meetings. Um, you inspire me as a board member. What you have done with a group of children that, students that never had anything four or five years ago. So thank you and to all the coaches and all the coaches. Thank you.
Hold on to.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you very much.
All right, Don, I think you get to, uh. Follow that.
Well, that was an awesome, awesome presentation. And I, I know it's very hard to follow, but, uh. It does make me proud to work in North Syracuse. What a great opportunity for our kids. And after all, isn't, isn't that what the budgeting process is all about? It's making sure that we have the resources properly aligned to support our kids to do things like esports. So. With, with that, um, we're going to talk about the, uh, the. My, I turned, they might have. Sorry. So I got a brief agenda tonight. As you know, the governor released, uh, the, her budget proposal, uh, last week and, um, we had a chance to look at the numbers. I'm going to share those with you. We'll refresh, um, our thoughts on budget considerations, a few things we want to keep at the top of our mind. We'll look at the preliminary tax cap calculation. Updated a few of the revenue and expenditure assumptions. We got our information on this line of library and then we'll just share some vote and, uh. Election information and finish with the timeline. So the governor's budget proposal, really there's, there's three main components. There's a conversation about. Foundation aid, which I'm going to jump into the next, uh, few slides. The governor's made some, uh, funding available for distraction free classrooms. Uh, those are her, her thoughts on, um, money to support, uh, managing cell phones within the schools. And then the third big, uh, item in the, uh, her budget proposal for schools was, uh, universal free school meals. And as, as the board knows. Um, our district, um, has been feeding, uh, students free breakfast and lunch under the community eligibility provision. And so we're very supportive of this and we see the benefits for families and for kids of, uh, being well nourished, um, to support their learning. Um, foundation aid. So the governor, there are a lot of words in that first bullet point. So don't, don't, uh, be intimidated. I'm going to just break it down for you. The. One of the complaints about foundation aid is that the formula is outdated and there were two pieces of information, um, primarily around. Understanding poverty better and wealth better. And so, uh, we were using data from the 2000 census, outdated poverty data. And that's been replaced with more updated, uh, information. Uh, the governor's proposing that be replaced with more updated information from the census of small area income and poverty estimates data. Um, and then also the free and reduced lunch information, um, has become inaccurate. Um, and the reason it has is that people aren't filling out the applications now that we provide free and reduced meals. Um, and so there's this feeling that there's a better measurement. And so, uh, they've, um. Put some additional information, uh, on low income and disadvantaged students, um, in the formula. So those are two really good changes, um. To the foundation aid formula. The, the second bullet point, um, talks a little bit about how the legislature hasn't really weighed in yet. Um, and so Rockefeller, um, Institute report included a lot of recommendations and information. The governor chose. Um, the two that I just previously mentioned. We'll have to wait and see, uh, what else comes out, um, when the budget's finalized on or about April, um, first. Um, the other thing that we always stress out a little bit about and those of you who remember governors, uh, budget proposals in the past. Um, sometimes ideas come out about how they should change expense driven aids and how maybe they won't pay all of the expense driven aids or they can combine them differently. Well, rest assured, it made me feel really comfortable, uh, that the governor has committed to fund, um, expense, uh, based aids. Uh, at the current statutory formulas. And those are aids like, um, you know, construction, pupil transportation, shared services, which is through BOSI's. Pre-kindergarten programs, um, and, uh, aid for students with disabilities. So. Um, that, that's a big chunk of our budget and, uh, and that, uh, put my mind at ease. So I'm anxious to see what the legislature does. Uh, with their deliberations, uh, but we're off to a good start. So. Share this with you every year and I, I, I'm going to confess that I don't love this slide. I don't love the way I present it. So I'm just going to take my time and just take you through the, on the left-hand column, those are all the different types of aids we get. You recognize foundation aid in the top there. And I'm going to go through each line. And explain the aid. The, the, the next column over is what the, what was included in the voter approved budget for the 24, 25 school year. That's the year we're in right now. The next column is, um, the executive budget, the governor's budget proposal. Those are the numbers that she's proposing with the exception of the yellow highlighted numbers. I've taken the liberty of updating those numbers to be more accurate, to reflect more current data than was included in the governor's, uh, budget proposal. I'll explain that, uh, in a moment. But foundation aid, as you can see, um, foundation aid represents about more than two thirds of our, of our aid, a very important component. One of the things the governor did was that I mentioned that she, uh, updated the formulas around poverty, um, and wealth, um, and. Um, but one of the things she did was she put a cold harmless clause in there that says regardless of how this formula works, everybody's going to get at least 2%. And as you can see, they gave North Syracuse or her proposal includes 2% for North Syracuse. So that's good. Excess cost aid, the next category. Um, one of the things that the state does and has always done for a very long period of time is they. They look, they want to make sure that there's enough money to support students with special needs. And so. They, what they do is they say, if you've got high cost students, um, that have extraordinary needs. When you cross a threshold and our threshold's about $33,000 for that student, we're going to give you some extra aid. Whether you have that child in a private setting or in a public setting. And that's what those aids are. Um. So when we got the governor's, uh, uh, budget proposal, um, she had. A much lower number for excess cost public. She had about $3.1 million in there. Well, I, I spent some time talking to. The folks that actually process our stack forms and there's a little bit of a lag in processing. And so. Uh, a more accurate number is around $5 million or potentially a little higher. We'll know better before the budget's finalized. What our excess cost date is going to be, uh, but the $5 million is a more representative, uh, number. The next two categories, hardware, technology, software, library and textbook are simply based on enrollment. And those are self-explanatory what they cover, but those are purely based on enrollment numbers. Um, and as you can see, they're down just a little bit for us, uh, but they're down because our enrollment's just down slightly. Um, transportation aid, it's an expense driven aid. Um, there are certain parameters as to what you can spend on transportation. As you know, we have an extensive. Uh, transportation network. Um, we, um, our aid, uh, is going to end up being a little higher than the governor originally, uh, projected. Um, and that's because we've spent more money, um, than we, uh, we originally planned on spending, but it's all aidable. We get aid at about 79%. Of our transportation spending. Now BOSI's aid is up quite a bit from where we originally, uh, expected it. And that's because one of the things I'm, that I'm, uh, really proud of our district in, in working with our directors and our principals and our cabinet. You know, we're always looking at opportunities for kids. We're always looking at, can we do something better, more cost effective? Can we offer our organization a service or, or students a, um, opportunity that they wouldn't otherwise have? And so we do the BOSI's budget. And then after, you know, we finished that budget, you folks approve it in April. Um, but after that point, we often identify and find opportunities to work with BOSI's. And so we're actually doing more with BOSI's. This year than we expected to do, and therefore we're going to get more aid. Um, and, and. The way BOSI's aid works is it's on a one-year lag. So we're actually getting more aid this year. Um, due to what we did last year. And I know that's a little bit confusing, but that's kind of how, how BOSI's aid works. But we're, we're constantly looking at, um, opportunities with BOSI's. And the other thing that's, that's neat about BOSI's is if. We don't spend the money and they don't spend the money, meaning if, if we make a commitment to them and we say, hey, we would like to do this program with you. And we actually don't do the program and they didn't have to lay out any money, they give us a refund. We've gotten really good refunds from BOSI's the last several years and I expect that'll be the same this year. Um, so, um, uh, that's, uh, that's BOSI's aid. Um, the next, uh, line down, you'll see the total, uh, without building aid. So you can see that our total aid is going from about eight, 89.8 million to, um, 91.3, 91.4 million. It's an increase of about 1.8%. Um, again, it's a bit of a rough number at this point, but we're, we're honing in on around a 2% increase in our state aid. Building aid, as you know, we've got a lot of projects underway here at North Syracuse. And you, building aid doesn't start until you file those final cost reports. So. When this, when the governor put out her budget, she only knew about the aid that they were going to pay us based on our final cost reports. But we've filed some since she finished her, pulled her data and we're filing more this year that will trigger, trigger aid. So this is going to be a significant increase in building aid for us and we need that aid because we'll be paying debt service on the expense side of our budget, um, with those funds. Um, the last item that I adjusted, uh, was, um, universal pre-K. Um, so the, the actual amount of our allocation is about $2.4 million. But we only get a certain amount of aid per pupil. And, um, based on our projections for how many students will be enrolled in our UPK program, we're only going to collect about $2.1 million of. UPK aid. Um, and so that's our, that's our total budget, our, our, our state aid, our total budget for state aid. Uh, and the governor's proposal is up significantly. Most of that increase is due to the increase in building aid. The aid funding, uh, without building aid is going to be up around 1.8 to 2%. Or I jump off that slide. Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, so the excess cost, is that because, uh, the reason that it's going down is that because there is not as much of a cost that we are going to have. Um, with the students that have excessive.
Uh, you know, honestly, I think it's, I think it's just the lag in processing and I, I'm hoping within the next month or so, I'll be able to update that number. I'm still optimistic that, um, because I know our special ed department has, you know. You've had a lot of kids that have had needs, um, that where we spent money and you know, the board's approved. Uh, when you approve, like for example, we just approved another special ed program at, at Smith Road. When you approve a program like that, uh, we go out and we hire a teacher and we hire a teaching assistant and maybe the cost per student. Um, goes up quite a bit because that was a six, one, uh, you know, six, one program. So you can imagine the cost per student of running that classroom. So that's not in the, those numbers. So we're going to, we're going to probably get close to our excess cost budget or the same amount.
Based on.
It's kind of low because we're behind in processing our stack forms. Any other questions?
Yeah. Um. I've, I've never been able to figure this out and obviously we're, uh, looking at. You know, what's best for students, but also our job as board members is to also look at, um. The financial part of it. So. BOSI's has a lot of great programs that we also have. And so I, I've never been clear on. What constitutes a, uh, child being able to go here for either like a 1214 program. It's your special classes, your 1214 program. Your 811 program. I don't know if BOSI's has a 611 program. Um.
You know, I am so glad you asked this question because, and I, this is probably a failing on my part in terms of doing the presentation. Special ed, we don't actually get any BOSI's aid when we send a child that has special needs to BOSI's. So there's no financial motivation. We only get that excess cost aid. So when we send a child, we say, oh, that child's better, uh, is going to be better served at a BOSI's program. There's no financial motivation for the district to do that because that child will be stacked, will go through our stack process. And we will get excess cost aid on that child, whether BOSI services the child or we do. One of the things we've struggled with this year and, and Chris and, and, uh, Dr. Ward can probably speak to this better than I can. Is just availability of seats at BOSI's for particular programs. So sometimes we might say, oh, that would be a great program for one of our kids, but. They don't have capacity for us, so we'll do that program here. Or we may have historically offered the program, but maybe. That child's better suited to be in the BOSI's program because of the way they've structured. Um, and so one of the things I, that I, that I want to. Just go on the record formally is saying, when we look at placement of kids and they go through the CS, uh, C, CSC process and their IEP is developed. There's no financial finger on the scale. We never, we just want to get the kid the best services they can get and wherever they can get them. Sometimes it's here, sometimes it's at BOSI's. And there's no financial consideration, um, for special ed. Now, on the operational side where we're doing IT services or we're going to look at. The bold system we use for elections or we're going to, you know, there's a lot of administrative services that BOSI's provides. Those services are aidable. And, um, and so we're always looking at, huh, that's a really cool service. Should we buy that ourselves or should we go through BOSI's? And our directors do a great job of. Asking the question, hey, when they're talking to a vendor, they say to the vendor, hey, can I buy this through BOSI's? Um, and sometimes it's OCM BOSI, sometimes it's a different BOSI's in the state. And so wherever we can. Provide an administrative program and get BOSI's aid, we try to do that. And I'm not sure if I answered your question, but.
You, you, you did. I, I just, um, I, and it's probably more of a, uh, a special education question. Of, um, what constitutes being eligible for a program there. At, at BOSI's and here. And yes, the seats at BOSI's, um, there's not always seats available.
But I can, I can certainly, as the budget process progresses, if you have more, uh, special ed questions, I can work with the special ed. Directors or the, or the team to get more information for you.
Do we have arts and ed? Do we do that through BOSI's?
Sure. Yeah.
Oh, cool. Good.
Yeah, we run as much as we, we can through arts and ed because it's a highly aidable program. And again, lots of great opportunities.
Oh, it's great. 50% off of, uh, unique things that we could do. Yeah.
You know, I, I, I shared with you guys, uh, uh, the last time, some of these considerations, but. And I want you to know that, uh, inflation's a factor, right? So as we're looking at the budget, um, you know, we've, we're coming off of a pretty high inflationary period. I. Updated this information since the last time I spoke to you. You know, we're looking at 12-month inflation ended December at 2.9%. So we can only pass through to the taxpayers 2% inflation. And you saw from the state aid run that it looks like we're only going to get a 2% increase in state aid. So. Over the last several years, inflation has exceeded our ability to pass those costs on to either the state through state aid or our, our taxpayers. So it's just a, it's a pressure point in the budget that we're aware of and we have to manage through as we're doing our budgeting. Um, we've made great progress. Mike, uh, Barudy has, uh, reported to the board. Uh, the great progress we're making on our union contract negotiations, labor contract negotiations, and we're on the home stretch. I think we're, we're, we're close to being done. Um, but, um, I want you to know that we're factoring all of those costs, um, and savings, um, you know, uh, were, were applicable into our, our budget for next year. That's a. That's a big consideration when you think about how, um, significant payroll and benefits is as a percentage of our budget. We've talked about this numerous times. Uh, I, you know, I know I'm beating, beating this to death, but. The, all the money we got, federal stimulus money is over. That, that ended in September of '24. And so it's going to be a little bit of a challenge as we, as we work through the budget, but we have to just keep that in mind. Um, that we're going to be challenged to sustain initiatives, initiatives originally funded, uh, by these programs and we're going to work hard to do that. And then, you know, the final point is that we want to make sure we're addressing the academic gaps, the social, emotional gaps, uh, or needs of our kids, uh, coming out of the pandemic and, uh. You know, we're going to continue to work with community partners, uh, to support student needs and with grant-funded programs. I mean, we're so lucky to have the 21st century program. Uh, uh, our Rocks kids down at the Rocks Board campus and programs like that. Uh, so those are things that we're, we're working on as we, we're thinking about as we work on the budget. Couple of other things, um, the strategic plan. Um, the district did an amazing job with, with stakeholders to put together strategic plan that. That outlined kind of focus areas, uh, that you folks know, uh, very well, graduation rate, reading proficiency, emotional competency. And those things will, as we're looking, working with our directors and our principals, we're, we're looking to check those boxes and making, making sure we're. We're, um, making progress on our strategic plan. Um, Micron, we've had so much talk about Micron. I just want to remind everybody that, um, there'll, there'll be a pilot agreement. We're not going to be, um, involved in. We're not going to be involved in negotiating that. It's probably substantially negotiated at this point. But the information I'm going to show you about the tax cap does not include a Micron pilot because that hasn't been finalized or communicated to us yet. They have until March first to, if there's going to be a Micron pilot this year, they have to let us know by March first. So we can include it in the tax cap and we can include it in our calculations. If it doesn't happen by March first, it'll be something that'll happen as part of the twenty five, twenty six school year. And we continue to work, you know, obviously, our, our directors, Jason Clark, who was here tonight with the esports folks and, and Dr. Leahy, working with Micron to make sure that we have, take advantage of different programs they're running and supporting us in preparing ourselves for Micron when they, when they ultimately enter our community. So these are things that are, that we're thinking about as we're preparing the budget. Let's dive into the tax gap. As you know, this calculation is a statutory calculation. This is, the state came out and said, this is how you must calculate your tax levy. Tax levy is the amount of money that we collect from the local taxpayers when we send those tax bills out. And it always starts with the prior year's levy. So this year, the levy was a hundred and one point eight million, we'll say. And they give us this thing called the tax-based growth factor. And it's kind of cool that the, the state publishes these tax-based growth factors. And the concept is, we're going to let you increase your taxes just a little bit to recognize how big your tax base has grown. And our tax base grew a little bit, so that's factored into the calculation as well. And then they look at pilot revenues. I mentioned the pilot that ultimately will be coming with Micron, but there are many pilots that are in place already. And, and the concept is, remember, if someone's under a pilot agreement, that's a payment in lieu of taxes, they're going to make this payment to us and therefore they're, they can't be included in our tax levy. And so we're, we're forced to remove any pilot payments out of the tax levy calculation. And the only thing that's impacted, if you kind of look, it says the twenty four, twenty five pilot revenue and the twenty five, twenty six pilot revenue. They're the same number right now because I don't have our pilot information yet for the twenty five, twenty six school year. And the only thing that'll affect this calculation, plus or minus, is the change in those pilot agreements. So if the pilot agreements increase dramatically, our tax levy will go down. And let's just use Micron as an example. So when Micron gets their pilot, the school district's revenue will not increase at all. Because what we'll do is we will subtract the Micron pilot from our tax levy. So the taxpayers will be the direct beneficiaries of any pilot agreement that's put in place. The other big factor is the tax levy for capital. And I know you see that same line again, the tax levy for capital twenty four, twenty five, and the tax levy for capital twenty five, twenty six. And you can see that that number's the same. And we are, we're working on, on finalizing that with fiscal advisors and, and we're, we're adjusting that. And that number is based on all of the projects that taxpayers have approved, you know, for the, with, when they vote on those projects. And what, the point is that we're allowed to increase the levy by the amount of money that the taxpayers said we could increase the levy. And as soon as that project is paid for, that must drop off the tax levy. So in other words, if we have a fifteen-year debt associated with a project that is a renovation of a school, on year sixteen, when that renovation is paid for, it drops right out of the levy. So the taxpayers don't pay for that project forever. And then the other one that we're, we're still working on is the other exclusions. It looks like, I'm not positive of this, but it looks like our ERS might go up more than that two percent. And there might be a slight adjustment in that again this year. But at the end of the day, our very preliminary, very preliminary, that's why we say preliminary tax levy is a three point two million dollar increase or about a three point oh eight percent increase in the tax levy. To refresh your memory, last year was two point nine eight percent increase. So we're kind of in the same ballpark. More to come on this as I get through more information with our attorneys on the pilot agreements and our fiscal advisors on the tax levy for capital. Revenue assumptions, I don't think I changed very much in terms of the, these items. As you know, our revenue is made up of state aid, the property taxes, and we're available stimulus money or grant money. And in the case of general state aid, we've updated our thoughts, thinking about what the governor's proposed. And we look forward to hear what the legislature comes forward with. Regarding expenditures, I got some great news. And again, it's very preliminary, so you know, this is, but it's the best news I've had on this topic in a while. Our, the folks that look at our benefits, and you know, we spent a lot of money on health, health benefits. They came in recently and said that they're projecting that North Syracuse's health benefits might only go up by four percent next year, which would be amazing because we've been in that nine to 10 percent. If you know, coming into this year, we went up almost 10 percent. So fingers crossed, we're going to look at this each month, every month until August, when we roll out the new plan. So there's a lot more to come on that. TRS was another piece of good news, a very small increase. I, I've kind of bragged to the board and I'm, I'm just happy to be the chief financial officer of an organization that has ERS and TRS because I think both organizations do a really good job taking a long view of the retirement costs and predicting those costs and, and spreading those increases out over time. So that it's not a roller coaster. But certainly with TRS, where the, the biggest portion of our pension costs are, a nominal increase is projected at ten point, you know, between nine, nine, five and, and 10. We're currently at ten, ten point 11. Salaries and wages, I mentioned, we're going to incorporate the latest contractual costs into our budget. And energy, we entered into a three-year supply agreement with, with NISMIC, the New York State Municipal Energy Consortium. We did that this past May and our budget will reflect those costs for electric and, and gas supply. And those are two pretty big budget items for us. The budget timeline, today, we just looked at the governor's budget proposal. I look forward to in about a month, talking to the board about the initial budget. That'll include a lot of input from our, all of the input from our principals and a lot of input from our directors and hopefully updates on some of the other revenue and expenditure items as we receive more information. Everything's working toward a budget hearing on May thirteenth and a budget vote on the twentieth with the board adopting the budget, hopefully on April twenty first. Any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, we have no comments from the audience this evening, but as always, we welcome and encourage the public to come and speak if they so choose. Board of Education Committee reports.
Thanks, Mike. Currently, we are in a holding pattern. We are waiting for the, the policy manual to be returned to us from area one BOSI's. We are hoping that that will be returned by the end of February.
Legislative committee will be meeting on February fifth. And I have reached out to the governor's liaison and I got to formally meet her at some event. And she will be coming to present some of the things that Don talked about. So we'll get a little bit more information. A reminder that February seventh is the Capitol Conference. If you, you'll have time to get to Jill and she'll put in for that. February eighth, please let Jill know. And Azariah, if you would like to go. Jill would put in for it and it's right down the road at BOSI's. And we get to meet with our legislators. And then I know Paul is going to Albany for Lobby Day. What I would like is down the road, I mentioned this last board meeting, is since we have a new superintendent, that we meet with each of our representatives and Don Keegan and some people from the committee so that we get to meet the new superintendent and we get to meet our new senator. So we'll set, set that up. Now I'll go right into BOSI's for you. So BOSI's, you got my report. There any questions or concerns? You always can contact me. My phone's never on. No, I'm kidding. Another thing I would like to do, and we've done it every year, and I do know most of you were, and so you can't come, is that we do a visitation. Colleen Vigiano, sometimes Dr. Cook will be our guide. And we go to some of the programs and we have the superintendent join us. And we get to have a wonderful lunch prepared by our culinary students. So I'll have Colleen meet with you or talk to you about a date. That would be good. And finally, I am up for reelection this year. And Jill will receive a letter from our district clerk to nominate somebody. And I have been on the committee for 10 years. I've loved this committee, this board. I think OCM BOSI's, it was brought up by Don and Dr. Kramer. It's just a great organization. I would ask for your support to be your nominee. And if you do, it'll be on the next board agenda so you can vote. That's where I'll end there.
Superintendent's comments, Dr. Ward.
All right, thank you. First, I just want to start off by saying, Azariah, thank you today for being my tour guide at the high school. I think we saw each part of it, some parts I had been in and parts I've never been in. So that was great. But really, the, the best part about the, the tour was getting to know you a little bit more and getting to know that you're going to University of Rochester and all of those things. So it was very exciting for me to, to spend some time with you. So thank you for doing that. She, we got her out of a study hall, so that was all right. Also, I have some, some letters here and I would like to read one of them. And we have some folks in the audience that, that we would like to thank. But I'd like to read one of these letters. I just want to take a moment to thank you for your exceptional support during the extremely cold weather over Martin Luther King Junior holiday weekend. Your commitment to incur, in, ensuring that district-wide operations were maintained despite severe weather conditions speaks volumes about your professionalism and dedication. Your collaborative efforts, attention to detail and the ability to troubleshoot and problem solve under pressure helped mitigate potential disruptions to the learning environment. The cold snap posed significant challenges and your proactive approach made a lasting impact on our ability to provide a safe and functional learning space for our students. Your hard work and willingness to go above and beyond is certainly appreciated. The district is fortunate to have such reliable and dedicated team member like you. We are grateful for your tireless effort. And I do want to thank, this one letter is for Scott. But I want to thank some folks here today. When most of us were enjoying Martin Luther King Weekend, these folks were here working diligently to get our students back into the classroom by Tuesday. And if anybody knows anything about HVAC, which I know about this much, it's really hard to take down a boiler or two and get that back up and running to work, especially when it's about five degrees out in the morning. So, so I'd like to thank the letters that are going out and some of these folks are here. So Scott Goff, Mark King, Paul Hendricks, Lacy Ostrowski, Chris Cluther and Matt Irwin. So thank you. I'd like to give you these letters. I have to get a ringtone like that. And, and just on the sports piece, I'd just like to recognize a few of our teams this past week. The CNS Girls, and I cannot pronounce the name of this meet. The Kirkensh-ender meet. And, and so they, they won that meet, which was great. And our boys took second at that meet. So I just wanted to mention that. We also had both JV and varsity teams took first place in their division for cheerleading this past week. So that was, that was great. Also, our CNS wrestling team took third in the Branshaw Memorial Tournament. And Kennedy Thomas was first and he was the most outstanding wrestler at that meet. And that's all I had. Those were the highlights that I had.
Very much. Do we have any board comments? Josh.
Just a reminder, make sure that you talk to all the legislators here. I think that there was more positive news than we were expecting in the executive proposal. But Don obviously showed us that there's still some work to be done. So keep that in mind as everyone on the board and also the general public as well. Thanks.
I talked to Mr. Rice and our high school team, Olympia team competed this past weekend in, at Le Moine and came in seventh place. Unfortunately, they missed the state by one place. Don will explain it to you afterwards. The junior high is hosting the junior high one on March first. So if anybody wants to go and see what a science Olympia looks like. But I was honored to attend Chris Ryan's swearing in by our comptroller, Tom DiNapoli. And the national anthem was played by our high school CNS student ensemble. Was so proud, I let everybody know there, even Tom DiNapoli from Albany, that that was from my high school, that, in my district. So we should be very proud when they go to events like that and other people are there. All of our legislators were there, all of, a certain political party was there. And our kids did a great job. It just, feel proud.
If I could just add one quick piece too. I did want to say what a great job our junior high students did on SpongeBob a couple of weeks ago. My family and I were able to, our family and I were able to attend and I thought it was two weeks, two Fridays ago, right? Last weekend, yeah, it was last weekend. And it was, it was a great show. So just wanted to say a great job.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Bob had mentioned I'll be in Albany on the twelfth. I just happened to be there in Albany already the last couple of years on the day of the NISBA Lobby Day. So I've made an appointment with the guy up there in the Zoom, Xavier, hey Xavier. And El Sterpy and I have an appointment with Chris Ryan. My time is only allowing me to get those two in, but I would do that. The only I'd ask, if NISBA has talking points, but between now and the twelfth, if there's anything you want specific mention for the district, just let me know. Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Azariah.
Hello, I just wanted to say, yeah, the tour was amazing. And I think the best part is to also, is also like getting to know our new superintendent. But along with just like being able to see the building in different light and being able to realize like how many like differences everyone has in the building, like different clubs, different classes, different sports, different interests. And I think it's definitely important nowadays to realize the strength in differences, especially like in a world where some people see that as a more negative thing. And now I want to talk about a lot of the students in our district who won CNY Scholastic Art Award, awards. And I absolutely like, it was amazing. If you go on the district website and see some of the photography that the students in our district are capable of doing. And I wanted to say congratulations to the gold key winners, the silver key winners, and also the people that participated in general. And I wanted to also say that next week on Thursday, there's a book event, go event that the National Art Society is going to be volunteering at. I know I'll be there to volunteer, but it's going to be amazing to see just, you know, a bunch of kids who are excited about reading. I feel like reading is really something that just builds character in kids and it really makes them more excited to learn. And they come into the classroom with a more enthusiastic. makes them more excited to learn and they come into the classroom with a more enthusiastic kind of like personality when it comes to learning. And now I want to talk about what I passed out, which is Harths and Hoops for Hunger, which is something that me and some kids in principal's cabinet came up with, which is going to be a raffle on the Valentine's Day game for CNS boys and girls basketball game. We're going to be playing Liverpool. And all the proceedings from that fundraiser is going to be going to our food pantry. And if you are interested in donating, just come to the game if possible. And we're going to have raffle baskets from, for many different things. There's going to be a candy gift basket, there's going to be a gift basket that I know that me and my club advisor put together is going to have international snacks from all over the world. We're going to have a CNS merch basket, we're going to have a basket that's kind of surrounded around movie night with, you know, gift cards, popcorn, candy. It's going to be an amazing time. So I think you guys should definitely show up to the game if possible. And even if yourself, if you're involved, if you want to get more involved and you're interested in creating a basket yourself, you can contact me and me and Mrs. Hill can get the information to you. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Very much. Please.
As you know, in November, Dr. Jerome Melvin passed away and he gave so much to this school district. And I have an idea, I want the board to think about it. And I talked to Lori Cook about it and she's already started, to give a picture of the plaque out front. Took a picture of, of the plaque with his picture and every, the information. And for us to write a letter to the family thanking Dr. Melvin for everything that he did. And there's quite a lot of stuff that we could put in there. And then you would either put the letter with the photograph or we could do it separate. But I wanted to get permission from this board to continue on this. I just think he did so much for this school district. I did attend the funeral and I know his family, his son and his two daughters would really love to have something from us, the school board. So what is your feelings on that?
I know interim superintendent wrote up a really nice piece and he got information. I would think that'd be a great, maybe even send that or tweak it a little bit so it comes from, yeah. But he had a lot of background information, I think, was the key pieces. And like you said, you could go on forever. We want to just highlight the key pieces. And you're talking about just taking a picture of the plaque out here. In the lobby. Oh, okay. Make it more personal from the board here. Yeah. Mm-hmm. No, no, that's fine. Okay, moving into routine action items. Item A, consideration of approval of the minutes from January 13th. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Mark and Amanda, any questions? All those in favor? Ms. I'd like to take B and C together, the consideration of the classification and school placement for disabled students. Do I have a motion to place B and C before us? Josh and Beth, any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. And discussion action items. Item A, resolution to create a 1.0 teaching assistant at Cicero Elementary School. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul, second from Josh, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment, same comment that I made, just because I, I think this is really important. A lot of times when kids are coming from preschool to kindergarten, the preschools that they come from, the teacher and student ratio, a lot of times you'll have like an adult for every three kids. And when we're making decisions about starting kids in kindergarten and to people who aren't in education, they might think that, oh, preschool, kindergarten, it's not a huge difference. It's a huge difference, huge. And when we look at kids coming to these CPSCs, CSCs, I don't know if everyone around the table realizes, they're going into, it could be up to 20 to 1. I mean, it's our numbers, we watch kindergarten numbers really closely, but, I mean, they're going into one teacher and a lot of kids. So when we make recommendations, you're putting them in something that is more challenging and then you're also, the ratios are a lot higher. I think somehow that needs to be brought to the forefront when they are having these CPSC and CSC meetings. I don't think everyone gets it. Anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Who else? Those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Try to be a resolution for the creation of the first Lego League Club advisors. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth and Mark, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item C, approve the separation agreement between an employee in the North Syracuse Central, employee of the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Education Association. Do I have a motion to place that agreement? Beth, second from Josh, any questions or comments? Resolution to increase the index of the high school facility manager co-curricular position. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul and Josh, any questions? All those in favor? Recommendation to approve the extra classroom account for CNS principal's cabinet. Do I have a motion to place that for us? Amanda and Beth, any question? All those in favor? Finally, we have a resolution to approve the final 2023-2024 tuition rates for non-residents. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul, any questions or comments? All those in favor? A couple of gifts this evening. Susan Feifield has donated $100 in the name of a deceased friend who had a passion for photography. And at the last board meeting, we accepted an anonymous gift of $10,000. And I just want to acknowledge that that will be used to support our STEAM initiatives. So do I have a motion to accept with gratitude those gifts? Josh and Matt, any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Before we get into personnel, I have a retirement to acknowledge. We have Melanie Hurley, an elementary teacher, is retiring with 25.3 years of service. So as always, we thank you for all of your time here and wish you a happy, healthy, and long retirement. Do we need an executive session before we go into personnel? Hey, personnel instructional A, do I have a motion to accept that as submitted? Josh, second from Mark, any questions? All those in favor? Brothers on there? Support staff, support staff B, do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul and Amanda, all those in favor? And personnel report C, do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth and Amanda, any questions? All those in favor? And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one negotiation matter with no action to follow, two personnel matters with no action to follow, and one parental appeal with action to follow. Second. Josh, any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.